This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our July Board of Selectment meeting. I'm Mike Frida, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Boweme. Thank you for joining us. I hope you're having a great summer. I'd like to ask everyone to stand, and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three, public comments relative to the agenda. Okay, seeing no public comments to the agenda. Item number four, we'll move for the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectment meeting of June 6th.
I'll make a motion to approve those June 6 minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, approval of the minutes of the special Board of Selectment meeting, which was held on June 27th. May I entertain a motion?
I'll motion to approve those minutes.
Second?
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six, no PowerPoint presentation, ladies and gentlemen, but a couple of updates. This past week, we had an Amazon Job Fair that we hosted along with Workforce Alliance here in North Haven. There were approximately 600 to 800 people that applied. This was the first job fair that we are doing for the Amazon North Haven facility. We've utilized Workforce Alliance to do the job fair. Workforce Alliance is an agency that I work very closely with. I happen to be, as I mentioned before, vice chairman of the organization, and they provide these valuable services in doing the job fair. So, the first one was done. There'll be a series of other regional job fairs. It'll start with 1,800 jobs, and then it'll move to 3,000 jobs, probably within six months. We anticipate the facility to open sometime either later this month or in August. We had a tour. The governor was down a few weeks ago, and it was a resounding success. Couple of other updates. Adriana's Restaurant in North Haven, it's going where Leon's was. There's a lot of work being done there right now, ladies and gentlemen, and we anticipate an opening sometime in the early fall. We have economic development projects all over the town. A hotel will be breaking ground in August on Universal Drive. It'll be a more upper-scale hotel, and that hotel will be designed to... For one of the reasons, it's going to be designed to help businesses in town who have corporate executives coming in from different areas that may not want to stay in the one hotel we have right now. We also are moving forward with Panera Bread building a standalone restaurant on Universal Drive. What that'll mean is they'll move from the Inland Plaza. There'll be a standalone Panera Bread next to the hotel. That'll be... That'll create us helping the real estate owner there fill the empty spot where Panera was, which we feel strongly we're going to be able to do. And then that leaves one more pad on the site over there at Universal Drive. So, next month, I'll have a more comprehensive update, but rest assured, there's new businesses coming in. And Boston Market, which closed this week, rest assured that building will be filled in a very short fashion, in a very short timeframe. They struggled here. I've met with the owners of the building. We spoke with the commercial real estate agent today. I have a meeting set up, and there's three or four different entities that would look to come into that building. So, I've said it before, I'll say it again. There will be new businesses on a continued basis coming in. Sometimes, we can't get what we want. Trader Joe's is a good example. We've tried. The income levels that they're looking for in communities far exceed where we are right now. But, rest assured, there will be new businesses coming in. So, with that being said, I'm going to move off of that. You'll have a more comprehensive update from me next month, and we'll move now to item number six. Sally has asked to put this on the agenda.
Yes, item seven. I wanted to give a brief follow-up discussion of the June 17th special town meeting. There were several items on the agenda for that town meeting, but I want to focus on the road paving portion of it, where we approved an additional $2 million in bonding at that meeting. And as always, I appreciate you accommodating my request and putting it on the agenda. The reason I wanted to talk... Have a little follow-up discussion is because I did abstain from that vote, and I wanted to give a little explanation as to why, and also some suggestions in the future going forward. But, I did appreciate that you accommodated my request, which I think I had made last year when I first talked about some issues with paving that were brought to my attention by a town resident. And you... I said, "Well, maybe the next time bonding comes before a town meeting, we could have some detailed discussion." So, I appreciated that you arranged for Town Engineer Andy Bevelacqua to be there, and so that was helpful. However, I was hoping to have a little bit more detailed discussion. Andy gave a lot of great information and answered a lot of questions, but he did qualify his presentation with the fact that he was not an expert in paving, although I thought he provided us with a lot of information. I just would have hoped that we could have discussed more options in greater detail. But, the main reason why I put this on is after that meeting, myself and about, I don't know, four or five other town residents came right up to this area here and had a discussion with Town Engineer Bevelacqua. And during that meeting, during that private discussion with myself and a few others, he had said that if, for example, one of the roads scheduled to be paved was in really bad shape with what's known as alligator cracks, which is much more severe cracking than the normal reflective cracks, that he would consider recommending a more comprehensive milling and reconstructive process, which is what I had been talking about, that maybe we could consider doing that. And he said that for certain roads, on a case-by-case basis, he may very well recommend that. And I said, "That's great." And if you had said that during the meeting, I might have changed my abstention to a yes. So, I thought... I felt compelled to bring that conversation forward, that there is always a possibility of a more comprehensive paving being done depending upon the quality of the road. And I also wanted to finally bring to your attention, Mike and Bill, a special report that I located in doing research on this issue. As you know, I got pretty much involved in this when a citizen came to me complaining that a new road, Manor Drive, had 45 curb-to-curb cracks a month after repaving. So, I researched this issue, and I came upon a very comprehensive report that was done by the engineering division of the Public Works Department in the town of Agawam, Massachusetts. And I just wanted... If you guys... I know how busy you are. If you ever have time, that you might want to read it. It's about a 75-page report. You could just go to the town of Agawam's website, and it's there. And it discusses the different types of cracking and different types of ways to address certain cracking, and I found it very helpful. And, you know, I'm pretty familiar with the town of Agawam. Many of you out there might know it because of Riverside, Six Flags. I lived in Springfield for three years when I was in school. And, you know, Agawam has 28,000 people. It's 24 square miles, and it has a very comparable blend of commercial to residential. So, it's a similar city. So, I just wanted to share that with you and Bill, that, you know, sometimes it's prudent to take advantage of the hard work of others. And obviously, they spent a great deal of money on that study. And so, I would recommend that if you ever have time to take a look at it. I thought it was a great presentation on paving management, and it was very helpful to me. And so, I just wanted to share that with you and explain that. And I'm hopeful that in the future, when we have other special town meetings for paving, for bonding, for paving, that maybe we could offer, rather than just yes or no on approving the bonding, you know, the town... In our form of government, the town meeting is our legislative body. Maybe give them a chance to actually legislate and give a couple of different types of choices. For example, maybe bonding 3 million instead of 2 and doing the same number of roads, but more comprehensive digging down and milling might extend the road to a 20- to 25-year lifespan. So, whereas a year and a half ago, you might recall, Town Engineer Bodwell said that with the current method that we use, we can get about 10 years out of the road. So, maybe it would be worth the 50% additional cost to get the same number of roads if you're extending by 100% to 150%. And so, I... You know, this is something that I still have in the back of my mind that we could maybe do a little better job in researching in the future. As you know, I fully support your efforts into repaving. I understand the need for it. I understand how popular it is with people. But, I just wanted to provide this additional information, and I urge you to look at that Agawam report.
Yeah, and you meant it's online?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll look it up.
Someday. Yeah, I found it very helpful, and perhaps you gentlemen would as well going forward into the future. So, thank you for your allowing me to explain a little bit more about my feelings on the paving project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Sally.
Okay.
All right, so we'll move to item number eight. Bill, would you do that one?
Sure. My glasses back on. Now, this is for bond and commission appointments and resignations. I'll make a motion regarding the resignation of Mark R. Trojanowski, 49 Jennifer Drive, from the Inland Wetlands Commission, term to expire December 31st, 2019.
So, I'd like to thank Mark for his service. He has been the chairman of the Inland Wetlands Commission for, I believe, over 20 years. And Mark loved doing it and served the town very well. But, he and his wife have decided to move right over the line on Route 22 out of North Haven. So, that then becomes a situation where Mark has to resign, but he served faithfully. We thank you, Mark, if you're watching, for your efforts. And next month, we'll have a candidate to replace him. Mark will probably... I know he'll be at this meeting in July, Val, and I'm not sure exactly when he's moving, but we'll have to have a candidate for next meeting. Thank you again, Mark. So, can we have a motion?
I'll second Mr. Piper's motion.
Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Sally, number nine.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the property tax refunds as listed in item nine of our agenda tonight.
And again, they're all relatively small amounts. And I'll make a... I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Well, we're at item number 10, believe it or not. And there wasn't a lot of business this month, but item number 10 is the next regular meeting will be Thursday, August 1st, here at North Haven's Memorial Town Hall. And now, we're at the point, ladies and gentlemen, public comment. Mr. Peter Criscola.
Michael, thank you very much. I thank the board for allowing me to come tonight. Sally, Bill, thank you very much. It was a great opportunity to be able to raise an additional $25,000 to buy ballistic proof vests and helmets for our firefighters. Either the vest, this is under the vest, they're ready to buy. They have trauma plates in them. Rifle fire. We have helmets. They won't be black. They won't be just colored green, obviously. And this money was raised through a few people. And one, Mike, I showed you the check.
Yes.
And Sally and Bill. This was Town Fair Tires. Was kind enough to give us the balance that we were short, $12,500. The other people that gave us money to make up the $25,000 was National Lumber, C. Coles. They used to be in New Haven. They moved to North Haven. Wise choice they made. They're able to give us money now. Tariq from Edible Arrangements, Robert Furz Incorporated, and FNF Mechanical, Mario. They're all personal friends, and I was very happy that when I called them, they were happy. They write out a check. It's unfortunate that we did go before the chief, did go before the Board of Finance, and unfortunately, the Board of Finance was not able to fund this purchase. So, when the chief told me, I went out. I called a few of my friends, and they came up with the $25,000.
Those are all wonderful businesses in town. I mean, hearing this, the FNF Mechanical, and of course, I see Dan here, Dan Ravino from Town Fair Tire. We work closely with his staff, Neil Mellon. And Pete, some of the other ones you mentioned, you mentioned C. Coles, Larry Moon. We brought him in a few years ago.
Larry Moon, a friend of mine from New Haven, he came up. And I have another dear friend of mine who did give... I could mention the amount. He gave me $5,000 the other day, but wishes to remain in office. He does not want to be bombarded by people. He's kind of quiet that way. And remember the late Bob Furz?
Yes.
His son and daughter, Mary Lou Stamm.
Mary Lou Stamm, right.
They were very nice to also contribute to us. And this is not... This actually makes a total of $103,000 that was raised, but this group just paid for the vests and everything.
Pete, you were here a couple of months back, if I remember. Maybe it was the April meeting. And I said it publicly, ladies and gentlemen. Back then, it was not $103,000. We see $25,000 more here, but $103,000, I mean, it's almost, as I said back then, it's a Herculean effort. Now, I'm seeing this check here for the first time, $12,500 from Town Fair Tire. So, what that means is, when you really think about it, $103,000 worth of taxpayers' dollars potentially in the future don't need to be paid by the taxpayers because this man has gone out in front of all the businesses and raised the money. So, there's an item there that didn't make the budget this past year, this vest that we're seeing here for the first time tonight. So, that means that those vests being purchased, the taxpayers won't have to purchase those vests next year or consider it in next year's budget. I don't recall in the 10 years I've been in office, anybody even remotely coming close to raising $103,000 for the town of North Haven. $103,000 that is earmarked to go back into one of our departments. It's an effort that I don't know what to say. On behalf of the town government, thank you, because I've never seen anything like it.
And Michael, we do have a few naysayers, obviously. Everybody does, no matter what you do. Everybody... No, I say everybody. There's a couple of people that are naysayers. There's a chief that's in Walton, Connecticut, right now, Ron Cantor. 40-year veteran firefighter. Started in Brooklyn, New York. Came here to Connecticut, put his few years in in Walton. And it happened to be that he's an FDNY firefighter, Assistant Chief, now a chief in Connecticut. Makes a comment, this is just yesterday, well, actually today, actually Tuesday. He makes a comment that 40 years ago, he never would have imagined that the fire department would need ballistic vests and helmets. He said, "But today, it's a necessity. It's part of their gear." Now, we do not have it for the entire department, but we have it to outfit each piece of apparatus that goes out. So, each shift change will have enough protection, which is very important. And there are approximately, I believe, nine fire departments in the state of Connecticut that already have this gear. There's 100 fire departments in Connecticut that are seeking out money for this gear. They don't have it in their budgets. They can't go out and raise it. And I know, and I've been told, it's not part of a fire commissioner's job, title, business to go out and raise money. It's not. The people that told me that are correct. It's not part of my job. It's not part of my curriculum. It's part of something I do because I have a passion for the fire department. Before I became a commissioner 24 years ago, I spent one year going to meetings, talking to the chief, before I even went on the board. This is not just a seat that I hold. It's something that I'm involved with, and it's for the town. And again, I'll repeat it. I said it... What was it, April, Mike? I believe it was.
You were here, I believe, April, yes.
This $25,000, yes. They're all personal friends of mine. Sumel, and you're all personal friends. Lowry from New Haven, Mario from FNF, the Furz family I know for 45 years. They didn't just give me the money. They gave it to me because I represent a wonderful place to live, a great town. It keeps everybody safe, and we have, like I always said, we have the best of everything. And we're very fortunate to have the best of everything. And that's what makes people donate $103,000. Again, it's not to Pete Criscola by himself. It's to a team effort. And we have one of our retired police officers in back, Val, and he was at the explosion that we had in North Haven. So, it does happen even in the quietest, quaintest towns. It was probably one of the biggest explosions in Connecticut that the SWAT team had to go to. He's retired since then. So, we see a lot that people really don't see. This is why we have the best running our fire department. We have the best running our police department with Tommy. Trust me, people have to believe in the leadership that we put there. And when they need something and the town doesn't have the money, I don't mind going out and trying to raise the money. And there will be another effort, Mike. I'm going to try and go out and raise, right after the 1st of the year. I would like to raise more money for another Lucas Heart Save machine. We do have two, but because we have three pieces of apparatus running all the time, I'd like to put a third one on that piece of apparatus so we don't have to wait or transfer one. We'll always have it ready. And we could also use it on the all-terrain vehicle if we have to go assist out in the woods or something.
Pete, what can we do as the government to thank these businesses? Would you like us to write a letter to each one? I'm willing to do that because that... I mean, $103,000 and some of the businesses you mentioned.
Yes. I mean, obviously, there's other ones. I could go through a whole list of them, which I have. I've given you a list. National Lumber, Billy, great guy. I mean, they're all good guys. Bill Ryan, you know.
Yes.
They're all wonderful people. Frank, Banning Construction, Ludows, Dalton, Mo from the Car Wash, Brian Havens. I can go on forever. We've got so many people have given us money.
Val, maybe we can work to determine how we can show our appreciation to these wonderful businesses that Pete's raised the money from.
I can work with Peter and see if we can get the list together.
Yeah, I think it would be nice if... Because they... I mean, they're just extremely charitable people. But, again, they believe in the town that they're giving the money to. And they under... And my philosophy and my opening to everyone that gave money was, we need to keep our first responders safe. It's like going on a plane. When you go on a plane, the stewardess tells you, "If the plane is going down, put your mask on first, then help the person next to you." If our firefighters, our first responders, don't have the best of equipment and the safest of equipment, how could they be safe to help you?
Right.
And that's why the department is just growing, and our town is growing, thank God. You just mentioned they're putting up a new hotel. We have Amazon coming in. The town is growing. New businesses, new buildings, new apartments going up on Clintonville Road, the new medical facility on Clintonville Road, Washington Avenue with another new big apartment, I believe, across from Vigliotti's other one.
You'll hear some of these next month. Pete's right on this, but those are some other projects.
I mean, he's...
You're doing his economic...
Doing your economic development speech. But, no, no, there's buildings going up everywhere. But, we need firefighters to assist if there's a problem. And I know that we hear that the 62% medicals and, you know, there's not that many fires. Well, there are fires. There are extrications. There are highway risks. We cover... Our fire department covers more highway mileage than any other department in this entire New Haven County. We cover more, covering 91, 95, pardon, well, actually, 91. I take that back. Route 15, and we cover to connect to Route 40. So, we have more highway mileage. And two weeks ago, one of our fire apparatus, one of our engines, was hit on 91 doing an assist, an extrication. The damage was extremely, extremely costly. Not to us, thank God, to the, you know, to the person that hit us. But, without that vehicle being there, the reason why we need to buy big apparatus rather than small little pickups or little rescues, why we need to buy apparatus at the chief's request? Because when we go out, we could send out four or five firefighters. We could block a scene. Had we had a small vehicle there, the impact would have probably killed a firefighter, if not more. A vehicle that size took a $70,000 damage, $65,000 damage. So, imagine if we had a small vehicle there. Now, that's out of service. We have another one out of service. If we didn't have enough apparatus to back us up in purchasing a new piece of apparatus rather than a small truck or a rescue, we would not be able to keep the town safe. We'd be calling mutual aid. And we wouldn't have enough apparatus to fill our departments. So, that's why the chief, when he requests something, I listen because he knows. He has the masters. He knows what he's doing. He's surrounded by two deputies that are truly smart. We have our lieutenants. And right now, our volunteers, Mike, are working so close with our career men that they're all blending together. We have like... We have the best department, I think, in the state of Connecticut. I really do. I always said that.
Well, once again, this is an outstanding effort, and I've never seen anything like it. I mean, the constant dollars that are coming in through what you're doing that are going back into the department. And you mentioned Tariq from Edible Arrangements, right? Didn't you get $37?
Tariq gave me... Four and a half, five years ago, Tariq, I met him. We became very good friends. He wrote me out a check for almost $17,000. Bought the first, the first battery-operated earth stool, Jaws of Life. Portable. We used it not even a month after that to extricate somebody from the north end of North Haven, up near Handingside. And without that, we wouldn't have been able to do it because you only have, I think, 50 feet of lead on hydraulics. That means you have to break it down, carry a generator, four men, to the scene. They carried... It's 40 pounds. They carried it, extricated. A year and a half, two years later, he gave me $19,000 more, and he bought the Lucas Heart Save machine.
Yes, right.
And now, he just gave us another $5,800. I mean, he's an icon in North Haven, Edible Arrangements. And Town Fair Tire right behind him. I mean, we just have Sims gave us a $5,000 donation.
Sims Mental Management.
Sims Mental Management, good friend of mine, Michael. Allbrick Steel, Chris, dear friend. We went out to dinner a lot. He wrote a check out for $10,000 for the drone. Plus, not only did he give us $10,000, but he used his buying power with that major company that he has to save us, I believe, $2,700 off the top of the drone. So, in essence, he gave us $12,700.
That's right, yeah.
So, you think about these things. These are people that are devoted to this town.
Right. These are some of the largest businesses in town and some of the great smaller businesses also. Dan, you're back there. Just wanted to acknowledge you again, Dan Ravino, Town Fair Tire. We work very closely with your people here in North Haven. I see Neil's name is on that check. Please thank him for us. Tell Mike, Mike meaning me, said, "Thank you very much." That's... Wow.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
And to the extent that we can, we all should, you know, I mean, you know, support businesses like this because they are in our town and in turn, support us the way, you know, like Pete so eloquently told us in terms of, you know, going through a, you know... Obviously, some of the businesses we can't support, mainly because they're commercial businesses that, you know, that we... But, you know, but a business like Town Fair Tire, as I was telling Pete earlier...
Pete earlier, I bought my tires there for as long as I've been in town. And I can't say anything but nice things about them, and this just is another reason to say something nice about them. Same with Edible Arrangements, so.
Thank you.
And everybody else has been involved.
Okay, any other comments? All right, hearing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. We'll see everyone next month at the August meeting. And once again, thank you, Mr. Criscola. Thank you, Dan Rubino.
Thank you.